I will go in call or special call meeting the board. And if someone turn it over to someone that can actually say Mr. Davis.
Thank you, I think, Chairman Rager. Primarily today will be about just kind of introducing you guys to strategic plans, Studer Company that we, you know, that we're going with. And I'm going to turn it over in just a second to Dee Dee Ashby. Dee Dee is the former superintendent Hopkins County. And they've had, they've been working with this group and on a strategic plan for several years. So she's going to take us through the process. And then at the end, I've got a little bit of time with superintendent report. I'll go over our numbers from yesterday. I got those this morning. And just a few line in thing before we wrap up. So thank you for your time today. It's hard here to have to get especially on Friday afternoon. So appreciate that. And at this time, Dr. Ashby, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you so much. If you can get over here where I can drive the travel. Are you okay if I take my mask off if I'm here?
You are.
All right.
Don't approach yourself.
It is so great to meet you all. I met some of you at KSBA. And I just, I am used to being on that side and on this side. So I know what you've been through. I've lived it. And so I just want to say thank you because I know that being a board member is a thankless job in a normal year. And through COVID, it's been something else. So I know that it's been tough. But I thank you for what you've all done. I thank you for the decisions that you've made for our kids and our community. So I want you to know, I certainly appreciate all of that. So, all right. I'm going to first just talk to you a little bit about Studer Ed, introduce you to that. And then we're going to begin the strategic planning process. So I'll move through this pretty concisely quickly. And then whatever questions you all have, please just ask me as we go through this. But I have worked in public ed for 29 years. And I started off in the high school. And I've been an elementary principal for seven, high school principal for four, assistant superintendent for three, and had some other roles in there as well. But then superintendent for five. So I want you to know, I'm not a consultant. I'm not a salesperson. I was retired for 12 days when I went to work for Studer Ed. So I really didn't retire or repurpose. And we had been in Hopkins County as Studer Partner for four years. Because when I came in, one of the interview questions from the board was, what can you tell us about a strategic plan? Well, my answer was, well, we don't have one in Hopkins County. So I knew that we needed to do that. So we began at my second year. Our coach was a lady named Nanette Johnston, who was the retired superintendent from Harden County, is now a KSA director. And so Hopkins County is still a partner today. Because the beauty of this is this is not just a flash in the pan. You know, the pendulum swings different ways and different things come in and out. With Studer, this is about something that's long lasting. We build it to last. It's what we call hardwired. So it kind of starts with the district, cascades down to the school level. And it'll be here past, you know, some board members, some superintendents, some district leaders, because we want this to be an investment in future. And it has been great for us in Hopkins. And I can tell you, if I didn't believe in it, I would not be doing it. I would not be here. And I certainly wouldn't have talked to Superintendent Davis about it. Because I believe it can be great things. And I feel like I know you all as neighbors in Mullenburg County. And I think it'll be a great, I know it will be a great fit for you. So always start with the why. Why Studer? Well, because, you know, we are nationally known, recognized with Carnegie and Malcolm Walbridge. We work K-12 market, also higher ed. And everything is based on evidence-based leadership, on data. So I want you to know that everything we do has research behind it. And on this page, the thing that stands out to me the most is what we do. And that's about strategic planning, which we're going to take you all through that in just a little bit. But it's about building capacity in your leaders. Growing leaders with the people that you have on staff now, the principals, any other aspiring leaders. But, you know, everybody can be a leader. That bus driver, that first good morning, and that last goodbye in the afternoon, they're a leader. And so it's about leadership capacity. And it's also about coaching. And so I will come in quite a few times during our journey together. And I'll actually help principals and district leaders to be better, to really talk about leadership and what that means. Because if we have happy employees, then we have happy kids and a happy community. So the last part, and this is the part that I like the most, is everybody I work with, most of those people are former or retired superintendents. So we are people who've been in the trenches. And so I work only in Kentucky. Most of the others work across the United States. But I'm passionate about here. This is what I know. This is my home. So, all right. Here's just a list of some of the districts that we work with currently. We've had others in the past. But Warren County was the first district to become a Studer Partner. And that was in 2016. And so next level partners, meaning those partners who have continued with multiple contracts, would include Warren and Hopkins and Harden. And we were all the first to start. So I think you're among the good list. We have, I don't know, 10 or 11 up there. And I coach about six. And that'll be pretty much my limit because I only work about 30 hours a week. So I'm pretty selective about the ones. And so I'm glad that Mullenburg County is, is part of who I'm working with. So even though we have quite a few other districts, our partnership is about you all. It's not cookie cutter. The districts I work with do not all do the same thing at the same time. So, you know, I've already been working with Superintendent Davis and his executive team about what your needs are, where you are. And so we're already formulating a plan. And it's about the kids. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to tell you how much I think of Robbie Davis. Now, I won't say that too often because, you know, he gives me a lot of grief at times. But he and I've spent a lot of time together through COVID on different group calls. And so we've always gotten along great in his lovely way, Gretchen. And so I just think a lot of him, and, you know, I know you all do as well. So, so how do we do this? And so this really just kind of maps it out. So what happens is, is that there will be monthly calls or visits. And since I'm so close to Mullenburg, sometimes it's easier instead of sending them just to drop here. But I will work with him. We spent the morning just talking about getting some dates on the calendar, about what we're going to do and when we're going to do it. I will come onsite and work with the district administrators and anybody else that he deems I need to work with. There's lots of resources that we have through podcasts, roundtables, different things, and then surveys. And to me, that's one of the most impactful pieces that we have. And I'll go through those in a little bit greater detail in just a second. So obviously, we're starting strategic planning today. And you all, as the board, kick it off. You start it and you end it. So this will take about a five month, or I'd say five month process. It starts with you. You kind of lay out some feedback for us. And then we start to build on that. I'll take you through all that in just a second. But then when we get the fine, when we get the final product together, that we feel is the final product, we will bring that to you. We'll have a work session very much like what we're doing now. You all will go through that. You'll have had time to review it. And then you all will make any changes. And then you will approve that. So this really starts, it ends with the board, which is very, very important because it's your vision. So it's about what you want Mullenburg County Schools to look like five years from now. This is an example. It's kind of hard to see on this. But Superintendent Davis has this PowerPoint and can share it with you. This is not a great big document like a C SIP or a C DIP that we just pull off the shelf from KDE when we do impact and checklist. This is usually just a one-page document that talks about here are your big rocks. And strategically, how are we going to get there? Because we want this to be a fluid document that everybody can look at and be like, yes, you know, this is something that we keep on our desk. And that it guides what we're doing with teaching and learning and operations as well. This is another example. Everybody's looks a little different. And you see the pillars like this group was about their big rocks were respect, student success, integrity, responsibility, accountability, support. The one before that broke it down just with students, staff, and community. So it's really about how you design it. The important piece of this is what we call the scorecard. And that's how we measure it. That's how we know that we're keeping our eye on the ball and keeping the ball movement down the field. So here is an example of the scorecard model. And while this looks very simple, where we have our pillars at the top, our measures, how we're going to monitor that and our strategic actions. That looks simple. But I can tell you that when we get into this as a district leadership team, this is where the hard work really happens. Because we are very methodical in how are we going to measure success? How are we going to measure that we're reaching our goals? And Superintendent Davis will call his group together probably about every 60 days. And we'll sit them down and he'll say, where are we on our scorecard? How are we doing? They'll start that at the district level first, kind of start simple, make sure we understand the process. And then that does what we call cascades down to the school level. So after the district gets that up and running, we'll bring school leadership teams in. And they'll take that strategic plan and kind of translate that into, what does that look like at the high school? What does that look like at the elementary and middle? So this is the survey piece that I alluded to. So this, to me, as a superintendent, is one of the most impactful pieces. In Kentucky, they give what we call the IMPACT survey, which used to be called TEL. They do it every two years and it's for all of our, all the certified employees. With Studer, once we kind of get up and going in a regular year, like when we, we'll, we'll give some of these surveys this year. But when we get, well, you all are obviously going with it, we'll give many of them twice a year, the fall and the spring. So that we will have longitudinal data. And it'll be the same questions year to year so that you can see how you're doing. And then we'll be compared, not to just Kentucky, but we'll be compared to all the Studer Partners across the United States, which is wonderful. Because that really gives you a bigger picture of where Mullenburg County is. So we do employee engagement, which is all certified and classified employees. Because we feel like every employee has a voice. And we want to hear that voice. And parent satisfaction and students as well. We can give it to third graders through 12th graders. But that's kind of a district call as to how you want to handle that. Sometimes you just do a sampling. But all of these questions are similar so that you're measuring similar information from each of those groups. And I will tell you, it's all anonymous. It's on a five-point Likert scale. And then there are comments. And I was sitting in a board meeting. And it was during COVID. And we had some parents to come in and they were upset. And we had done what we called a pulse survey through Studer. And it was back in like 30 days and then 90 days. It's a little different from these because it was designed specifically for Studer. And some of the parents were very upset. And they said, you don't ever ask us how we feel. I pulled that right out of my bag and I said, yes, we do. We've done this survey. You know, we had over 800 responses. And so much of that information shaped the decisions that are board made. So it's good for you all as a board to have that information for you as we go through these surveys. The one that I haven't hit on is District Services Survey. And that is the first one that we recommend that you do. And Superintendent Davis and I have already booked some tentative dates for that today. And we're going to meet with principals in about a week or two and go over that with them and district leaders. But District Services Survey, survey, I'm repeating myself, looks a little different than all the others. And basically, it starts in-house. Because if we're going to, if we're going to put these surveys out there, it needs to start at the central office. It needs to start with the superintendent. It needs to start with district leadership. And we need to find out from our direct reports, from our principals, our assistant principals, our curriculum coordinators, how are we doing? Are we answering emails in a timely manner? Will we answer? Are we accurate? Are we approachable? Can you get ahold of us when you need us? Do we have a good attitude when we do that? And I have no doubt but to believe that Mullenburg County District Leadership Scores will come by top of the pack. I mean, I believe that wholeheartedly. But there'll also be comments on there. And that feedback helps us grow. It helps to make us better. If there are any blind spots, then we'll be able to see that. All the comments are very confidential. Superintendent Davis will see those. The people who are participating in the survey, like if I'm being surveyed as a director of whatever department, I will see my comments, but nobody else will. And so I think that that is a great way to start. It makes principals and others feel better that we're willing to lay ourselves out there first. So we'll talk about that with our district leaders and our principals when we meet with them. You guys have any questions about the survey? All right. Creating a Strong Future Together. That is your swimmer right there. That looks like it came out of a magazine, doesn't it? So those are your kids. And I keep up with you on Facebook. And so here we are. And we're ready to start talking about our strategic plan. So as we do this, we will have focus groups that come together. We'll meet with our principals. We'll ask them to share with us names of parents, names of certified and classified representatives from each of their campuses. And so then I'll come in and spend a couple of days, in evenings mostly. And I will meet with focus groups. And we'll have what we call discovery sessions where I ask them the same questions that we're going to ask you today. You know, what's going well? How can we improve? And I'll take you through those. And so you all will answer those questions first. And we'll lay that down as the foundation. And then every group that we meet with, even our students, will build on that and will layer it. We will have a steering committee. And you'll have a board member on that. And then that steering committee will come together and start to piece all of that together. And we'll see what that looks like. We'll also meet with community members. They'll have an opportunity to be in the discovery session. And when I met with Superintendent Davis and his group, they continued to stress to me how important was, it was for every voice to be heard. That everybody needed an opportunity to speak to this. So we'll actually, once we get our dates set and we get those names back from our principals, then we'll have a couple of open sessions that I'll just be here for like an hour, a couple of different, you know, an afternoon, evening, whatever. And people can just show up and that they can just be part of this. Now, this is not, this is not a session for COVID discussion. This is not should we wear masks or not wear masks? This is about these questions. And so sometimes people show up, sometimes they don't. But we want everybody to have the opportunity to speak. The other part that we'll do is once that steering committee kind of gets this all framed, we will put it in a survey. And we will put that survey out on your Facebook page, your website. We'll send a one call home. And it's for anybody in the community to go on. And we'll have, you know, a statement that says, here are some opportunities for improvement that we have gained from listening to the voices in Mullenburg County. What do you feel are the top three? And so everybody will have an opportunity to respond to that, even if they have already. Because again, we don't want anybody to feel like they haven't had an opportunity for their voice to be heard. Once we get that, we'll compile all of that into a strategic plan. We will bring that back to you all for approval. And we hope to get all of that done within about five months. So, does that help?
I have a question about the parents that have a chance to be on this. Will each of the principals send letters home? Just a blanket letter to let the parents know this is an opportunity? Or how will the parents be on the committee?
So that's a great question. And kind of what we did and what others have done is to ask principals to give us some parent leaders in their building. But we want a diverse group. And so they'll submit names and then we'll look at it. Some people won't want to serve because of time constraints or whatever, but others will. And so we'll just compile a list. If we see that we need a bigger cross-section, then we can actually have two groups of parents. And that's something that Superintendent Davis and I talked about. So we kind of go through that at the wishes of the board and see where we are with that once we get those names back. Sometimes it's your PTA president. Sometimes it's a site-based member. But we don't usually just send a blanket home that, you know, says, hey, if you want to do this. But what we will do is make sure that we get input out to all parents about the survey and about some of those open forums. The way I look at strategic planning is this. This is about honoring our past, but building our future. It's about, and these are quotes from others. These are not Dee Dee quotes. This is about bringing the future into the present and creating that future now. It's about you being at Walmart and church and different places. And when you hear people talking about Mullenburg County Schools, what words do you want to hear? What valued words do you want to hear that people describe Mullenburg County Schools, your leadership? And so that's what this is about.
How, how in other districts, the parents' involvement? How, what have you seen so far?
What have I seen from the strategic plan?
Yeah, regarding parents' involvement? Has the parents been involved with this?
Yes, yes. We had a good involvement in Hopkins County when I did it. And I didn't do it. It was Studer, you know, that did the heavy lifting. But we had good attendance. Now, we didn't have, not a lot of people showed up at just the open forums. But some parents would maybe hear about it. And they would say, you know, I would love to give my feedback. And somebody would either take that down on the phone or we would invite them to come to the open forum. Or we would say that survey is going to come out. So we want to be open to whatever anybody wants to share. But we had good response. And we had a lot of community people. You know, I think we had a group of about 20, 20 people that we asked to come, community leaders. Because we want to make sure that our plan kind of coincides with Mullenburg County in general. You know, are we all pulling in the same direction?
This reminds me of visioning processes that we went through. We went to the community. And we did the hearing everybody's voices. I mean, it's almost deja vu. So that's exciting.
What worries me a little bit, and Dr. Ashby and I have talked about it, I'm going to have to call you Dee Dee, Dr. Ashby. Doesn't feel right.
That's fine. Well, I'm Dee Dee. That's how I go.
And I'm Robbie, and that's fine. Is the voice of our, our parents in poverty.
That's my question.
Because that is something that we've talked about early on. And when I talk to some other folks from Studer is how can we guarantee that? Because if we don't hear from them, we can get a false sense. And we want this to be genuine. We want it to be real. I don't want it to be something that just sounds good, something that truly helps guide us. And to do that, if we've got 60% of our folks in poverty, how do we get them in to talk to us? And so we can truly, are we serving them? We don't, you know, we kind of think we are, but, you know, how, that's, that's the challenge. Is how, that group will be the challenge. And we have to figure out a way.
And, you know, we looked at that envisioning, you know, part of it was, do we go and set up where they're at at the longer max at Walmart? You know, actually get out in the community and make it available for surveys and that type of thing.
Absolutely. And Robbie and I have talked about that. And we've kind of shared some ideas. And I was just, didn't necessarily share all those in the meeting. And I was hoping that maybe you would share as you felt appropriate. But we did brainstorm some ideas of ways in which we could try to connect.
And quite honestly, though, we've tried a lot of things before that haven't been as successful as we'd like. So that, that's the worry. But that's what our hearts all need to be in on that, is what do we need to do? I certainly want to hear from community leaders. And, but we also want to hear from this group. And we've talked about providing food and things like that because that often, it does help for anybody. I mean, you know, you guys only came if I got you a Sonic during the day. So I understand that. But that is something that I will tell you is very, very deep on my heart is how do we, how do we get that voice? If we don't, this is not viable. So, and I know y'all feel the same way. So this is something we need to keep asking that question. Are we hearing from those folks? And if not, all right, what are we going to do to correct that?
Can we not make a list in the front office? Be better to record them often for reasons, just what happened on this? Have their names and contacts and?
Our friskies can help with that. Our friskies can, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And that's what we do with the superintendent breakfast that I used to do. And some of the folks were like, that's a vibe, we can tell.
Not necessarily the complainers, but concerners, I believe. You know, the blackboard, maybe they're concerned. You know, we think they're complaining. Get them to see they're, you know.
Absolutely. If we need to do this for several nights, we certainly can do that. I also know that Robbie and I talked about really talking to those principals about how to get some folks involved. And so I'm sure that when we meet with them, and that's the first member, that we'll be able to have some of those conversations. And we'll monitor that closely. And if we see we're not getting what we need, then we'll step back and punt again. Because I know, and I heard that very loudly from district leadership, that that's hugely important to you all. So we want to make sure that that's at the forefront as we go through this. All right. So we're going to start with our list of questions. And so this is just a slide about what strategic planning is not. And I've pretty well gone through all of that during our introduction. I will say this, 80% of what we do in schools keeps the boat afloat, keeps it operational. 20% of what we do, of the time that we use, keeps the boat moving forward. So the strategic plan is really about not writing down everything we're already doing that's great. We're already doing those things. So we don't need to put those in the plan. We need to focus on the 20% that's going to move us forward going down the road. So that kind of helps with that. And I've taken you through the process about the board and your role in it and how we gather information. So here's our first question. So Superintendent Davis, I'm going to ask, did you take notes just like me? We were going to, I was going to delegate that, but we had some folks that couldn't come for very good reasons. So I want to make sure, and Robbie will be able to help me, that we capture everything.
Ren, are you, are you going to be able to be here for a bit? I know, I know you may be in and out. If you could help with some of this, that'd be great.
That would be good. Thank you so much.
If you need a laptop or whatever, then whatever you need to do, thank you.
Do you need to get a laptop?
I don't have one waiting today.
Okay, all right. So what are the key strengths of Mullenburg County Schools? What do you feel like that we're really doing well? Communication with parents, students, everybody?
Everyone, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I hear more out in, out in my district, that the communication is so much better. I hate to say this, but it's been so dependent.
Well, and you know, it's funny, I had a board member from Hopkins.
You had his son too.
He called me and said, hey, I just heard Robbie Davis on the radio. And said, he really did a great thing. He was thanking all the parents because they'd been in school for five weeks and hadn't missed. And he was thanking everybody for what they were doing. And he said, you know, that's really good idea. And I said, it is. And I said, you know, I'm not superintendent anymore, right? Yeah, but I just thought that was a good idea. Well, yes, I do too. And I wish I'd thought of that. So I agree with you, absolutely.
And honestly, God, one of the things that a little bit worried me a little bit about doing this now is because, one, we're so stressed for time. And this is going to take some time. And two, people are not happy now in general. You know, everybody's just stressed with COVID going on. And this is bigger than COVID. This will, this plan is, is independent of COVID in a lot of ways. We want to, we don't want to make this to be surviving COVID and doing it. This is five years down the road. And hopefully, we're, we're past that. So it's a little bit of a tricky time, I think, to do this. But I still think it's, it's a great time to hear from parents though. But they may want, it may be so COVID skewed. We've had that conversation. It worries me just a little bit that it'll be more about COVID than, in the future.
I may need to, I'm going to just try to type this in my next slide. If I can just type it on there, it may be easier. But they're going to have that view unless you.
It's harder to say. You know. All right. Your screen.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. Okay. I'm going to do this, I can type it. So I have right now, communication with all. So what else? What are we, what are the key strengths of Millenbar County Schools?
Ideas for team work well with each other. I'm going to talk about what Mr. Davis and I just, Robbie, since, off the days.
You're boss, that's right.
Anyhow. So culture is something that he and I talked about when we worked together, he was my principal for a while. And that's really, really important. And I've worked in other districts, so I've been in other schools in other states. And I can tell you when I came here, the culture was already good, but it's moving to great. And I'd like to see that continue.
I think we're supportive, I think we're, we're supportive of our community overall.
I agree.
Not every phone call would illustrate that. But I, all the way through, through COVID even, I think our folks have tried to stay with us, even though you may disagree on some things. So I think community support as a rule is, is pretty strong.
I don't think the communication drives a lot of that, because it's, I think, know what's going on.
They don't know what's going on, well, if they know anything about it or not, they'll tell me.
All right, the next question is, what are opportunities for improvement we should focus on within our district? And so within this question, what are opportunities for improvement we should focus on within our district? I've broken it down into five categories. Improve student achievement, retain high-quality employees, better serve our parents and community, secure needed resources and improve facilities, and operate more efficiently. So I've kind of got five areas underneath that opportunity for improvement. So let's start with student achievement. How can we improve student achievement, student achievement, teaching and learning?
Be a school.
So attendance, improve attendance?
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely.
I think we've really, we're working, you know, we really got side effects of it, but I think ACT scores at the high school. Right now, it's really difficult. K prep or whatever their version they're giving us, the last two years have been crazy. But even before that, ACT scores are something at the high school in particular that we have talked about. And we brought in extra resources and all, but we kind of got the sidetracked a little bit last year too. And that's so measurable.
How can we improve student achievement? Anything else you want to add to that?
How much do we go into this, DeeDee? Obviously, like relationships and mentoring, all this plays into student achievement, but it doesn't really fit there. I mean, I.
I'd say let's put it there, and then we can always leave it or move it somewhere else.
I mean, relationships, even on a strength thing up there, which I think Susan kind of talked about that. I think that comes with, you know, working well together. But I, I do feel like a strength in Millenbar, either, even my principals now, we talk all the time. And I think teachers talk, and we talk with bus drivers. I just think there's a lot of relationships, you know, in, in our district. You know, and I think that also, but that, that helps with everything under the opportunity for improvement. If you have a good culture, you have good relationships built up, it makes it so much easier to make changes.
Culture and relationships, I think, are going to be really hard to differentiate, because being a teacher, and if you allow the parents to know you and you communicate well with them, and they understand you, and they trust you, and they're going to be more supportive of what you need from them at home in the evenings or during the week. Like you said, it's kind of hard to.
I agree, that's the problem.
I think expectations of professionalism among your staff and, you know, excellence in instruction in every classroom is, will carry a long way. If you've got good things going on in every classroom, you're going to have some success.
Well, I'll tell you something else that's important to me, I agree with you, I think. Is, I, I think it's so important to be visible at, at any, any level of leadership. If you're a principal, what's going to help construction, what's going to help is, is to be, be in classrooms all the time. To be just, you know your kids, you, you know, you, you know what's going on. So I think my job's to be in schools, principal's job's to be in classrooms, you know, even bus driver, Kim, she's going to ride buses. She's, she knows those folks. So I think being visible is incredibly important. Being excessive, and again, I don't know where all these fit, I'm just going out of my state. So I'm, I'm, I hope you're dropping the right, in the right spot there, DeeDee.
What I'll do is, after I collect all this, after I capture it, then I will kind of clean it up, and then I'll send it to you all, so that you can work on it too. One thing I just want to share with you about what you're talking about, and I want to emphasize this. I've already been and worked with a couple of the districts, and one of the first things that we teach is cultural gratitude. And it's about interviewing during the first thirty days, those new teachers, and making sure they're fitting in. Emphasizing about writing thank you notes and re-recruiting our employees. And I tell my principals and superintendents sometimes, okay, this is going to get a little warm and fuzzy, so put your, put your seatbelts on. But you know, I've been back and followed back with those districts. I was in one this week, and I said, tell me, tell me the stories you're hearing from what we've done. And it, it's really, makes you feel good, because it's things that we know to do, but sometimes we don't take the time to be intentional about them.
Okay.
And I'm going to have to keep going, or I'll just keep talking, and y'all be here tied to a crupper.
I just wanted to add, with what Brent said, you know, every classroom's important in what they're doing. And I think if you find situations where it's not, we hold accountabilities in place to, to correct it. Inconsistent accountability.
And that goes back to expectations.
I think we have to be a lot more attentive to students. I know every teacher wants all their kids to go to college. There's a lot of kids that don't fit in in college, and we need to be more attentive to those kids. And if they're not doing well, find out why. And maybe they need to be in a trade, something that they like, and we need to steer them towards that.
And we have, we have a great setup with our tech wing to do more of that sort of thing.
One of the things I wrote down was focus on bringing up people who value working. And it doesn't matter what type of work they do, they, you know, no matter what it is, that will also assist in bringing people out of poverty. If we bring up workers, people that value that, then it's a way out.
So when you say, and I'm, I'm moving down now to retain high-quality employees, because I think that's kind of what you're talking about, right? So focus on, are you talking about promoting from within, or growing our own, or, help me understand?
I'm, I'm talking about not so much in the school system, but outside the school system, students learning to become good workers, and the values behind all of that, and bringing up people that don't rely on the government, that want to go out and get a good job, and are getting back to the community.
It's something we talked about before COVID hit, it kind of got, with soft skills. We really hit soft skills, employability skills, whatever you want to call it. We really, we really, and I thought we were seeing good progress with that. We were hearing from our community members, from anybody that come in with our kids. Now that's, we're not even bringing the community in right. So that's changed a lot, but that's something, you know, I don't know where that fits. But the, the emphasis on soft skills, we want to, you know, and maybe now obviously add resilience to some of the things that we're facing problems, but I don't know where that fits, but that is something we've started on before, and we definitely want to get back to. And I think we had great, great buy-in from our staff, from bus drivers to custodians, everybody jumping in. And from being polite, we started a kindergarten, and then going to a lot of interviewing as they get older. So that, that I think was becoming a strength, and it maybe not again, but we really need to revisit that. You know, wherever that would fit in, I think that's something we all agree that was really important.
Especially now, after the last few years.
Okay, I moved what you all just said back up to student achievement. So now I'm moving down to retain high-quality employees. So how can we improve in that area?
I think retain and recruit. We're in that, that constant cycle of trying to find, sometimes fill gaps in, in this, in this economy right now. It's kind of a challenge at times. But, but I think going back to what you said a minute ago, with that positive district logo, that, 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 your, kind of your, your motto, if it's a selling point and it, it fires people up to do their best, and, and it represents what we're all about, I think it also attracts people to want to be part of that, to want to be part of a positive effort and to serve your community. So not only retain, it would help recruit.
I think offering hard experiences, we've tried to do some, but we can even do better to, like coaching. And, you know, for, for folks who may want to be administrators or, or administrators who may want to further their leadership. You know, we're doing some of that today with bus leadership, and I think I would like that even more, for maybe we can coach our own. You know, so I think, you know, to continue to develop your own, and let's just be honest, pay. And we're lagging there in some ways, and actually Eric's going to help us by subdue. And I'll force him later, maybe, make some more change there, but that certainly is a thing. Are you competitive with your neighboring districts? I mean, we may not be able to compete with a nineteen-dollar an hour job somewhere, but, you know, if we're lagging behind, you know, can we get creative with our salary skills? Is there something we can do better there? I think we need to take a hard look at that. I mean, it did.
Well, something we touched on just a moment ago was new teachers. So years ago, I was in charge of the new teacher program in my district. And that's, the majority of teachers that quit their jobs, quit after the first year or during the first year, and they go on to something else because they, they don't think they can handle it, but it's only because they're not supported. So that is one of the main things that, that I would like to see happen here. I'm not sure what we have in place for that right now, but supporting those first two teachers is.
They do kind of mentor, we do, we are planning on going around and talking to each one, like she said, you know, they've done it in the past. But I think we could be more purposeful and, and better about it.
Okay, let's talk about how can we better serve our parents and community?
Get them good problems.
Listen to them, spend time with them. Breakfast with the superintendent things that I did, you know, back when I first started with COVID. They were, they were good. We got to sit down with small groups and heard some things that, you know, we felt maybe were going well, maybe weren't. And that's what worries me with this, if we miss that key group, we're going to get a false sense of impact over there.
Didn't some of the principals start doing that as well?
Yes, they did at each school level, they did a practice with the president, they sure did. You did that, Brent, y'all did that, didn't you?
It was very, very successful. I had the same kind of reaction you had.
None of them came in, correct?
You know, I had, I had some really good months, and then, then I had a couple of months where it was just a handful. But, you know, sometimes a smaller group, you get into a different kind of discussion and, and so.
More productive with smaller groups sometimes, too. We only did seven or eight, but he, we did kind of what you said, something like, I may knew I had a problem. I said, you don't invite them, and so it's a little different when you talk. And you know, I don't know when you have time, but a breakfast with a board member, or something like that, where you guys had eight or ten. You know, it's, they appreciate, it always went well. But what, here's what bothers me, we would often, I said, you know, don't necessarily, I don't want, want every PTL there. I want, I want some folks, you know, friskies helped us get some folks. And we would have eight or nine, say, let's just dress down, this is chill, we're just going to eat some doughnuts and talk. And out of eight or ten, I made five or six show every time. And that's what worries, you know, there was somebody to talk to for whatever reason, at the last minute or whatever. You know, either not comfortable, or whatever, that's what we've got to try to knock that barrier down.
I think that not comfortable is the key thing.
I think it's the same for the churches.
Absolutely. But we don't want that, you know, so you don't want to come in wearing a tie, you know, a log. You know, because I'm just Robbie, you know, but you may not, I'm careful you don't perceive that. And they're going to look down on me and all that, that's what we've got to knock and let happen. And once you came in, I think totally got that feeling. Just talk, roll the sleeves up, talk.
So I put reduce barriers and expand that diversity of parent groups involved. And I'll reword that to make that a little better. I'm not going to dive in on the spot, but, all right. How about, and this is the last one under this, how can we operate more efficiently? Obviously, this is something you all have tackled and done well with. So how, what are some other ways we can operate more efficiently? And this is, you know, from the operations side of the house.
Can you break down the operations for us a little bit?
So maintenance, facilities, anything not, I mean, obviously all things are teaching and learning, but more the physical campus.
Mechanism.
Yes, yes.
I know we've been working on being more energy efficient, getting, building new buildings that are more energy efficient, as well as replace, the things that we replace, we're making sure that those are highly energy efficient. I think we've done a good job with that, but I'm sure there's one we could do.
The facilities plan really is part of this that we have updated, just, just updated. I, I think some of this, we've been forced to be more efficient, because we have cut so many employees over the last one, five, six, seven years, because of our crisis, our money crisis before. So everybody's running pretty lean, which means you have to be more efficient. Look at, you know, look at bus routes, and I mean, Kim does this all the time, so it's not like I'm coming, you know, it's not like we don't do it. And DeeDee, if there's some things that other districts have said that you like, you may just want to throw out his thoughts, then maybe there's something we're not thinking about that you should.
Well, and I think that's the beauty of doing these other groups. We'll lay down what you all said, and then others will see that and think of other things, and we'll just keep building on that, and then the steering committee will come together and kind of see what we can combine.
You know, like, you know, to me, it's like, can you, is it conceivable to get kids on one route? Is that more efficient? You know, I've talked to Kim about that, but that's pretty tough, that's not a simple thing. But is that something, I just wonder where parents are on that? But I'd like to get input on, you know, we run two routes now, and they have to for a while. The transportation, are we maximizing our time, is for, is it the best calendars we can have? You know, I'm not a big vote about day ban, but we kind of had to do it. I'd like to get away from that, you know, maybe next year, but what do they think? So all that, to me, is part of efficiency. And back before that last round, we didn't do POs, we didn't do a lot of those things, you know, money-walking that. We are, you know, we're doing that now, our hands are not forced. Just got to spit on some things here.
Well, back in the day when you and I were in principal office, this, this, that, we, we were pretty fortunate for maintenance and upkeep of our buildings, and, and we, you know, we probably, as a district, we're spending more than, but over the last five years, that has gotten a lot more, a lot tighter. And we've saved the district a lot of money changing our practices. And so I think it's a pretty tight process on that perspective, and it's, it's managed pretty well. So we've made a pretty drastic change over the last five years.
I would agree. And I think the purchase order system in place really cuts down on a lot of, a needed excess, or makes you think about it.
Right, and we combine jobs, and we just think how, you know, maybe sometimes it's detrimental to staffing kids a little bit, you know, you worry about that. We're definitely leaner than we were. You know, TBA is always leaner.
I honestly think that what you just said could be one of your strengths. Yeah, so, okay, in five years, when we've been successful, what's that going to look like? What have we done? In five years, when we've been successful, what have we done?
Made every graduate to leave Millenbar County School ready to either go to school or go to work, one of them too.
So we could say increase college and career readiness with every graduate.
Not just part of them, all of them.
So increase college and career readiness with all students. Your job is to make sure this is saved. You have job security, you would in Hopkins County for sure. That's been my downfall, as I've gone virtual working like this, I've said, I don't have to take a car boot down the hall. Sorry, I share too much. Okay, so in five years, when we've been successful, what have we done? We've increased college and career readiness with all students and all being capitalized.
We've created a culture of. Happy workers, happy employees.
Pride in Millenbar County. You know, I don't know how you measure it, but I want, I, when I was a principal, whenever my kids' agreement was going to field trip, you'd ever come around, I'd talk to each group. I wanted, I want to be able to pick out those agreement kids, because they, they handled themselves well, they did the soft skill stuff. I would like our graduates or our kids in general, if they're out, and again, I don't know how you measure this, but, you know, those kids are from Millenbar, that's just the way they handle themselves. Just an expectation that they have those, those non-academic abilities. You know, academics are great, maybe some are better than others, but they all know how to handle themselves. They all know what it takes to get in, do an interview. Kind of what you're saying, Darrell, but you'd just like them to stand out. And I think we were heading that way, we've been on some of the soft skill stuff, we were hearing those comments. But it's hard to measure that, DeeDee, that's the thing. Some of these things, I'm saying, I don't know how you could put a number on it. Some of these things I'm saying, I don't know how you could put a number on it.
Well, and we don't have to worry about that right now. We just kind of lay that out there and then as we go through the process, we kind of wrap our heads around that as to what it looks like. So I had created a culture of pride with all workers. Did I get that exactly right? I don't know that you said pride.
I think within the community for Millenberg County Schools in general.
Okay, so then I said increase Millenberg County Schools pride and then our students are standouts. So did I capture that correctly?
I think when a business comes in, whatever happens, that one of the best selling points should be Millenberg County School System. Is this or that, is, you know, they're, these are the kind of kids they're producing. Here's, they have these programs where adaptable to whatever maybe a business needs with our Jack department in conjunction with we look smart. But you know, when somebody comes in, they, one of the first things is, listen, let me tell you about this school system. And you know, I think there's a lot of things now, but I don't know if we can articulate it like maybe we would like to, like maybe this will help.
So I put create a school district that is a selling point to attract economic growth.
Well done, Dee.
Yes. Every now and then I get one of those.
Thank you, Ari, that's good.
Okay, and then question number four. This is kind of what I alluded to earlier. What words do you want to hear when people describe their service and experience in the Millenberg County School District? So I've got a list that we can project if you need some suggestions. Do you think you need some, you want to look at a list?
Can you repeat that, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, look, can we, can you bring this back to project this? Question four is, what words do you want to hear when people describe their service and experience in Millenberg County Schools? And so.
I feel blessed to have worked in the community.
Okay, so hold that thought for just a second and let me show you kind of what I'm talking about. So when we get this, what we will end up creating is your value words. Okay, and then we'll look at that with your vision and mission. And so, look, I've already torn up your equipment. I am really going to get fired by Robbie now. I might give my Sonic right back.
Jan has no expectations of being a kid in that home.
So you can see this, that this talks about, like, these were the five, uh, words. Uh, and I, I, this may be Hopkins County, I'm not sure, but it was respect, teamwork, accountability, professionalism, communication. And then you do the value statements under that and then that ties into your vision and mission. So we'll collect all these words and then of course this will be on our survey as well when we do that. So that's, and so I'll then show you like, here's a list of questions. I mean, there's a lot of words out there, um, that you can see. So I'm gonna. Okay, so now I'm going to go to the next one. Okay, here we go. Can I just type on this? No.
No, that goes through the slideshow.
Okay, so what I do, escape?
Yeah, we can get that up.
He tried to work though, I'm sure.
He is earning his, he's going to say to Superintendent Davis when I leave, I'm going to have to have more money if she's going to come back. Or else you're going to have to tag somebody else. Okay, just go back to where we were and I'll just type those words. It's okay, just if we can go back, because it's, we're almost at the end. Okay. So the first word was blessed, right? Okay. Blessed, okay, what other value words? You're at Walmart, you're at Kroger, you're at Sonic, what words do you want to hear?
That Millenberg County Schools produces excellence.
Okay.
Positive or optimistic?
I think service should be in there as well. Blessed, excellent, optimistic, positive, service. See how these could start to form?
I think they need to know, uh, you want our, our parents to know that we care. I mean, and it's, you know, it's real, that's one thing when I talk to them, you know, you may disagree with, with the way we do things. And sometimes we're wrong, but at the end of the day, you want them to think that we're trying to do things, we, we're, we're trying to do right. We're trying to do right by kids.
That's what I was thinking with service, just as, in serving others, not just helping them with things, but letting them know that we care. Talking with them, it's going to go to the same.
But we see that, we see people going so far above the beyond and doing it for kids that nobody ever knows about. None of that gets out there and you want, you know, I don't know how you illustrate that because people do it with humility. But you know, if, if they, if they think you care and think you're doing, they're going to forgive a lot of things.
That's why I did caring and helpful.
I'm trying to think of a word that fits kind of this, that, but inclusive, I guess, or it, you know, when you include the parents and include your staff and voice and it's a unified input. I don't know if there's a better word than in, inclusive, but.
So I put inclusive and unified because I think when we start to combine all this, we may think of words that encompass several of those. Cause as soon as we leave and get in the car, we're all going to think, oh, I wish I'd said that word, right?
Well, teamwork's, teamwork's a good word, it was on.
Teamwork is a good word. Okay, so remember, this is just the first, first go around of this. We've got a lot, a lot of ground to cover in five months and you're going to think of more things, you're going to hear people say things. And so you have the final blessing on this. So we will spend probably longer than an hour in a work session, uh, and go through this. And you'll have a board representative on the steering committee so that board member can then come back and share things with you all and gain your thoughts as we go through. So just in closing, um, it's hard for you to see this, but today's October the fourteenth and we're kicking this off. We hope that by May, you all will be blessing a final product and that Superintendent Davis will be ready to roll that out in September. I'm sorry, in June of twenty twenty-two. So between now and October, from October till about April, uh, we're going to do some employee engagement surveys. We're going to do the district services survey, we'll probably do a parent survey. And then have all that information to help feed what we're doing. The steering committee will meet several times, we'll have focus groups that'll last no longer than an hour, but because we want to be respectful. What we've done today, even with an introduction, has taken us about an hour and we've laid a lot down. So I, I think we're off to a good start and, um, do you all feel good about this so far?
Yes, I was not to meet it yet.
Good, good. Okay, well Superintendent Davis, that's all I have, other than he's going to come and save all this magic.
Okay, what, thank you, Dee Dee, is, are there any other things that you guys would, would like to ask about or anything, you know, what's, I've been.
I think we'll get stronger too by learning this, going through this process. What as a board member, we are not all right, we are.
And it's a tough time to kind of lay yourself out there.
Yes.
What people just already frustrated and don't want, but you know, that's, that's okay. We'll, we'll work through it and, um, like Dee Dee said, it's important, I think, to start with the, with, uh, the central office folks and we'll supervise it. And we'll just get feedback, are we doing what we think we're doing? So, uh, and I think our district is primed for this. I think we've got folks that aren't hateful, they're not looking to, to call, you know, just to blind you. But if they have legitimate concerns, then, then let's hear them. Which I should have done this two or three years ago and, and, uh, it's costly and it's, I really didn't know how to start without it, to be honest with you. But the S R funds, you know, you feel like, all right, now you're not taking it out of. Yeah, and so it just, it feels like the timing may have been right a little earlier, but it's certainly right now. So I'm pretty excited that, that, to work with Dee Dee, you know, we're, we're friends anyways. But, uh, she is, before she ever worked for Stu, uh, a year or two, it's like, this is a good thing, I mean, you consider it. This is something that's worked well for Hopkins. So and when she's working with Hopkins, such similar folks as well. So I'll say that, I'll go through a few things here before we let you out. I kind of thought this was going to last a little longer, I misunderstood it, so I am, it's good. Okay, the test of state, we are kind of in the process of, it looks like Monday or Tuesday, they may be making the, that there's, we're about a day or two behind. And, uh, but we have met with someone yesterday, been with representatives, they went to the school. And we'll be communicating, Carl's been out with some, some things and, uh, so we're, we're going to keep, get that going, hopefully start it further next week. And remember the two things, two reasons they cannot be in test of state, we're going to make sure we say that clearly. If they're a household contact, we're just seeing too often that they are, and you know, you're being positives from that. And then if they're symptomatic in any way, they're not eligible for test of state. But those are two things we'll make sure that we say over and over to parents to make sure that we're on the same page. Cafeteria, uh, Brent, would you care to grab Eric, he's going to talk to subpay in a little bit? Cafeteria, Scott and Noel will be at the next meeting. Quite honestly, I'm frustrated with how slow that's going. And, uh, I think it's in the state department some, but I want Scott to come look you guys in the eye and explain this to us because I, I'm getting questions every day. Why is this, you know, when is this going to start? So, uh, he will be here in person, uh, next Thursday. Jim Floor is coming along. Jim Floor is mostly late, now we're going to start working on the logo and the painting, we're not quite there. Uh, Eric just talked to, talked to, uh, the gentleman that's doing that in, in maybe next two or three weeks. So I'm thinking as basketball season starts, uh, that, you know, that, wish we'd had provided ball, but I think we're close to that. Okay, here are, it's something we're going to have to be considering, we're not there yet. And I met with a large group of superintendents yesterday and we all, this is one of the main topics. At what point do we get to optional masking? What kind of metrics can we come out with? Now, we're not there, we're still sixty. But as, as we see now, more districts are getting, getting in better shape. Because here's what we don't want, guys, I just want you to be thinking about it. We don't want a situation where, okay, if we go orange, we're this, and then you're red the next day, then you got to go back. That will be awful. So, you know, one of the things, I'm just throwing out some things, spit bomb from yesterday, one's hospital capacity. We don't want to forget to check that. Fire would be, and right now, I talked to Ed Heath today, we're still almost full, and he says the same, I don't know if you know this, that, he was saying about Owensburg. The other would obviously be the incidence rate, you know, what is our cover, you know, on that map? Now, one thing that, that some districts were talking about doing, just be thinking about it. They said, once we're in orange, two weeks, you know, you're not going orange.
What is bothering right now?
Oh, no.
What is, is anybody bothered with the mask right now? Why is this topic coming up?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of folks that want to be optional masking whenever we can get to that point.
Long time.
Well, I, I'm just saying, we, we need to have a conversation if we get in better shape, I think it's the right thing to do. And I think it's a while too, I mean, we're, we're, we're not.
This year they can forget it. We've got what, two months left, November, November? It's been a little bit of stuff.
Well, these are just things I want you all to. Yeah, I'm not saying let's do it now, we're not ready to, but I, we promised folks we would talk.
It's slowing down, I just don't want it to come back right, back, back.
Well, and that, and that's the thing, we, we don't want to come up with something that, hey, all right, Monday, we're, Tuesday, we're back. No, and that's why a lot of them are saying maybe two weeks solid, declining numbers and then on, I'm just throwing out possibilities. Staffing will always matter, even if we're good. And then I said, we're still, we're not in good shape on, on bus drivers, then that's, that's got to always matter. And the other thing, guys, what if I said over and over, what's the number one goal? Number one goal is to be in school five days a week. And if, if we're, if we get to a point that we think doing that is going to cause a lot more quarantines, then, then we might not be ready to do that. So we need to have that conversations and if some other districts do that ahead of us, we'll watch them. We'll see what happens with their quarantines and their positives. So again, don't think that I'm going to hit you up Thursday and say, let's do it a week from Monday. I'm just throwing out ideas for us to think of, it may be a month, two months down the road. And another one is the vaccine for all ages. Uh, that apparently we think, Stephanie, you may know more, I'm here maybe early part of November, that that could be a possibility for five to twelve year olds. Which gives, you feel a little better if they at least have the option. I did see today, we reached fifty percent vaccinations, uh, fifty percent of the folks in Millenberg, exactly fifty percent today. So here are our numbers. Yeah, and moving right, and, and again, we are moving in the right direction, we want to be, we want to be happy about that. That doesn't mean we're what we want to be yet, but at least we've seen this a little bit. We'll see what happens with fall break. We have thirty-one kids positive, one hundred and sixty quarantines. We have nine staff positive, five quarantines. The state positivity rate, which is a big sample size, that's something that interests me, that was over fourteen percent. Early August, it's at seven point nine one now, so that is definitely something to be encouraged about. The Millenberg incidence rate, we're at fifty-nine point twenty-five on that map. We are one of the highest ones in western Kentucky. We were at a hundred and twenty-something at one point though. The state average is fifty-one point sixty-five, so we're still above average, including all of them. And we actually at this point have twenty-one districts out of a hundred and seventy, I think, a hundred and seventy-three that are yellow or orange. So the, what I'm saying is, uh, there's reason for some hope. And I'm just, we'll see what happens in fall break and then we got Halloween and you know, so. But all these things, I'm not saying to anything other than we promised our folks we'd have a conversation. And these are just some possibilities of a metric. And as I keep learning from other folks and see maybe they come up with something, but I, one of the things I hadn't thought of before, one mentioned yesterday was the hospital capacity, because we sure, you know, obviously we'll run Kathy Bethel. But we don't want to be one where, uh, if we do something and it possibly does get worse and they're already at max, we don't want to add to that. So that is, that's something to, again, we may use this, some of those, none of those, that plus five more. I just want to throw it out there now as, so y'all can be thinking, and if you hear other things, well, what about this or what about that? Maybe you go, use some yellow instead of some orange, you know, I don't know.
In the hospital, you're open to six or eight beds to go in the hall.
And that's what, and that's what is there.
Work out with it. That's it, that's why a lot of them go to bigger rooms.
And I will be honest with you, I think very few around here are, are having these talks now, other than what I just said to you. Be thinking about it for down the road. I don't think anybody's saying the next two weeks is going to happen.
Do we have to put a plan together though, so that we have it, so our parents know what we're thinking?
Well, I think that's, we don't know. Um, but what I think is, what did we promise? We'd have a conversation. And so I think that's when we talk this openly and honestly. And just like you said, Roger, even, maybe it doesn't look good for the next month or two, and I agree. But I think we're, we're talking, we, we want it, when it gets to what we think is reasonable. Now, the pro, the thing is, that's a good problem. When we get to the point where, because before, nobody really, really bucked, is they, they hate them, but they're like, I would get it. If you're going to have seven hundred quarantines, you're not getting kids in school.
But it's, that's cut down a lot from five hundred to a hundred and sixty-nine.
It has cut down a lot and I, again, I think what we're going to see, we're going to get to a point where a lot of folks are going to say, now's the time, and we may say, now's not quite the time. We need to be able to list, say, we're articulated well and we're talking about it. We're trying to do right by our kids and be able to explain, here's why we think this. And again, one of the things I think we have to be so careful about, we want, we don't like them. We, we all agree, we're not fans of them. But if, if we go down, if we do a color and we say, hey, as soon as we get to orange. Well, if you do that and the next day you have one family could push you back to the red and now you're putting them back on. We've got to have something that has lasting power, you know what I'm saying? So start not even bringing it up now because I don't want to rattle anybody's cage, but just want to be honest with folks. We are, we promised we'd take a look at it, we, we're going to take a look at it. Am I recommended in any way that we're there yet? No, we're not, we're not. We're, we're still at sixty on the map and, and I think everybody around that I've talked to yesterday feels the same way. But some will be getting there sooner than others and then when that happens, like, when's Millenberg? So if we could have something, I don't think you make a, a, a hard plan too early because things change so much. But these are some of the factors that I've just been brainstorming with other folks for y'all to be thinking about. We may talk about a little bit more Thursday. I want to know if we have to come up with something now, other than, guys, we are taking a look at it. We may simply say, the next board meeting, we're going to take a look at it again. But they need to know because we promised, and I said it, we, we are considering, we are looking, we are watching. At the end of the day, we just want to do right by our kids, our staff, and we want kids in school five days a week. Now, are we getting a bunch of complaints? No, no. But when that's going to happen is when our numbers keep getting lower and lower. And that though is a problem, it's a good one, because we're moving in the right direction. And of course, this time of year, last year, the scary thing is, is when we, we kind of blew back up. Didn't have vaccines, they did. So maybe, maybe we won't see that. But anyway, I just want to kind of throw that out there. The other thing I want Eric to talk a little bit about, subpay, we can't miss those. And I'll be honest, we're, we're having trouble getting people in any job and it's not just us, it's down all over the world. It's, it's, it's everywhere. But we took a look at subpay, asked Eric to look at surrounding districts and we're not good. And, and we need to get better and we're going to take a look next year on a bigger salary schedule, really. With everybody, with classified in particular, and are we where we need to be? He's been working on that for quite a while.
Everybody there.
Yeah, it'd be fine. The subpay, we wanna talk about a little, and maybe make a change, we're gonna actually propose we make a change at the next board meeting, to start in November, make sure we're competitive. What I don't want, be it a teacher, a bus driver, a custodian, can we move them to eighteen dollars an hour and, and match some folks of it? No, of course, we cannot do that. But I don't want one of those subs saying, you know what, I'm like just up in McLean, or Ohio, or Todd, because they pay, they pay better. So, he's done a pretty extensive s- study, and, and we want to be competitive with surrounding districts. And so that's what he's gonna talk about, and, and again, we'll follow this up Thursday as a, as an agenda.
Thank you, Robby. So, I'll just kinda go over certified first, 'cause it's fairly simple, and then classified next, so. In terms of certified, you know, we, I looked at every surrounding district that we had, like the ones that border directly off to us, and the ones that, you know, are kind of in our service area, so to speak. The way, many of the districts surrounding us, they have, they have one flat rate for each, uh, rank. Whereas we had, uh, you know, zero, three years, three, three, different, different grade, uh, pay scales per year's experience.
And we're talking subs only now, correct?
Yes, yes. And this is, you know, like I said, strictly for subs, um, in terms of certified, but what we did is, we tried to say, okay, let's look at our highest pay versus everyone else's. And believe it or not, even our highest pay was well below everyone else's. So, it's kinda, kinda obvious why we were, uh, keeping, you know, keep people or being able to recruit them. So, what we did is, we just said, okay, let's just look at our highest pay and start comparing to everyone else. Then, I took that and the difference, the percent difference, you know, if it was like ten percent different in, in this location, uh, below, it might have been twenty percent below in another location, or we might have even been above in one or two areas. So I took those averages of those percentages and said, okay, let's apply them to what we currently have, and see where we can go with that. So I think we came up with a, with a good scale, so we've got one rate per rank, uh, up to retired teachers. So we start at rank five, and then progress through retired teacher. It is a, like, re- retired teacher, that's one that, it, it was a significant bump. You know, it was, I believe we were at like, what, one twenty-one or so, and it's now one forty-six, just because everyone around us is, is, uh, paying higher than that. And believe it or not, that's our biggest pool usually is.
Sorry, for those who haven't said before, it's one forty-one per?
Per day, per day. So, one forty-six is what we're gonna recommend.
Hundred forty-six?
Uh-huh. And that's, and it's still below their daily wage threshold, those sorts of things. The daily wage threshold is when you retire, KTRS says you cannot make more than this per day. So that's why, it's, it's generally well below whatever, what any teacher is, is getting. But, with that said, we still have to be able to recruit them, and, and I do believe our, our largest recruiting pool, are retired teachers, and you know you're getting someone that's quality, because.
Because they can't fuss about the rate either, right?
No, but.
Because they can't get more.
Right, they, they don't fuss about it, but, you know, I mean, if you can go to McLean County, one county away, and make more, the drive probably be worth it, you're not gonna spend twenty dollars a day and gas, so.
But didn't you say that the drive coaches cannot?
Yeah, they can't make more.
They cannot make more?
No, there, there's a certain threshold, they cannot make more.
So how can they make more if they drive to McLean County?
Because if our daily rate is a hundred and twenty dollars, and McLean's is a hundred and forty.
But the max, that'd be two hundreds, so.
Yeah, like, so, so for, yeah, so, like, they're, so, okay, I'm sorry, okay. So right now, like, say for instance, a rank one teacher with twenty-five years, their daily rate is, I believe, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-six cents, or something roughly, that, that amount.
Okay.
That's what they're getting paid, if you took their sole salary divided by a hundred and eighty-five days, that's what they're making a, a daily rate. Then, and then when you retire, KTRS says, okay, you can make two hundred and eleven dollars a day, or it, it, there's no, I don't know the formula, to be honest with you, they don't tell me, so I can't really tell you how that's calculated. And, and, yeah, and so no one's, we don't, we don't have a problem with that, but, you know, if you're a retired teacher, and you're looking at, you know, maybe seven a few days, well, and you live in, especially if you live in Breeden. Well, if I can go to Sacramento or Livermore and make twenty dollars more a day, why not? So, um.
Is the one forty-six pretty well what surroundings doing now, or is it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, it's gonna get us more competitive with, with the ones that are closer to us, so.
You have a one twenty right now?
Right, uh, yeah, I believe it's like one twenty-one, or something like that.
It's a twenty-five dollar gap.
It's a twenty-five dollar jump, and, and that's, I mean, I know that's a close to seventeen percent jump, I think, is what I looked at. Oh, yeah, one twenty-five, twenty-four, thank you. So, is, is the highest retired teacher. Thank you, Chad, I appreciate that.
We first talked about, you know, maybe we can make changes for next year, and we're like, no, you know what? In this case, it's, it's a fairly simple fix, and let's go ahead and do it, because we're springing up for subs in every category. And it's still gonna be hard, but it's just like the ones, we don't want somebody done more, so you know, I just go talk and, and make more. You know, that shouldn't be the case.
I've heard that, looks up, too.
It's true, it's, 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 it's true.
So that, so then, so with that said, you know, I'm gonna move on to classified, if we're okay with that. In terms of classified, um, there is, they have it all different kinds of ways on how they pay, pay the classified. The way we've had it, and we've had it since day one that I've been here, is there was a separate page on, it's called, we call it page zero, it's all the odd pays. So all the substitutes were getting, you know, like, ten seventeen, and nine ninety-nine, all those kinds of odd, um, numbers. So I, as I looked at it, and I said, okay, what on our current pay scale will get us to where we, we sort of need to be in order to be competitive? Excuse me. And so Robbie and I looked at that, and we said, okay, the year, the others are year zero, and then there's, there's a year one. Well, year one, across the board, kept, got us fairly competitive with everyone. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna recommend that subs are paid at the year one hourly rate for whatever category they're in. So, you know, for some, for some, it's maybe a five percent jump, for others, it was like two and a half. So, it's not a huge jump right now, but, but it'll bring us, it'll bring us more in line. Now, Brent, there are still going to be counties that are paying well above, uh, especially like, like, if we just look at the bus driver and custodian area. Bus drivers, you know, there are some counties that are still just beating us hands down, but there are other counties that were just, we were really close, and we said, okay, well, if we can try to bring them to us, we, you know, we, we need them. So we said, okay, that year one is, is what we wanna do.
And we will revisit all this whenever the salary schedule, you know, we'll get in March.
Absolutely, that was the next thing I, but, so like, what I was gonna say is that what we're doing now is, I'm looking at every classified position we have, and I'm comparing that with surrounding counties. We wanna try to get people on par, you know, it's, it's sort of a market adjustment, you know, we're in, if we're, you know, in certain categories, we may be right on par, but we'll leave them alone. Other categories, we're well under, I do know this, and, and so, I wanna look at those and say, okay, where are we there? So then, when that happens, next year, um, you know, depending upon where we get to and where we need to be, I would say, okay, we're just gonna move that back down to year zero on the subs area, does that make sense? So right now, we're just to keep, get us competitive, we're gonna put it at year one, and then when we start looking at everything else, and, and getting us to where we need to be, then we're gonna move it back down to year zero. Which is kinda where we started, and but then the more Robbie and I talk, we said, well, there's certain categories that we need to be competitive in, and we, we weren't as competitive as, as we could be, so we said, okay, year one. And it's not a, and it's not a significant jump either, from that, to that, it might have been one or two percent, you know? So, that's just what we're looking at, and other questions.
And Eric, can you, you can send all this to them, where they can look at it?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I would leave that on classified, what's up difference between, but then I'll figure that out.
It depends on the category.
It depends on the category, so for instance, like, um, uh, Hopkins County on sub bus drivers, we're well above them, well above them. But then if you go to McLean County, we're well below them. So, you know, it's almost a wash on those two, but if you go like Todd County, they got, they might be a touch higher of it. And, or, um, Marshall County, you know, I know that's a few counties over, but still, they're, they're pretty close to us as well, in terms of size and, and that sort of thing, and they're well above us, so.
You know, a few years ago, when we did on the up, and we, we changed to the multiplier, and, and so that was kind of an evolution in salary schedule, they didn't have any kind of other sun stipends, and it got a little straight, more straightforward. Where everything went up and down together, instead of this and that, longevity and all this. So that was, that was a good thing, and anytime you get into salary schedule, it's gonna be a little controversial, but I, I think it's time for the next step, to take a hard look next spring, and just, you know, in some cases, we may need to move this group, not this group. And it's always a little tricky, but if we've got data that backs it up and says, look, guys, this group's way behind, and this group's in a decent shape, you know, and, so we're gonna, we're, we're taking bigger picture, too, which fits in with the strategic plan. But with subs in particular, we just didn't wanna leave, I mean, I don't want, every sub, it's precious, everyone, that, it's in one classroom, that not covered, that you gotta figure out something, you know what that's like, Kim, so.
And we're gonna get affected November first, so it's a clean, clean date, and, uh.
Again, I, I, I think of that, you recall, but we will be bringing this to you. And we'll get this information, where you can look at it, it's kinda hard to absorb it all here, where you can look at it.
I'll send you my spreadsheets.
Everybody, the people that are doing the discounts, are doing sign up, sign in bonuses. We got two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty dollar red cards, you know, and Dyson, I think, the other day, three thousand dollars per truck, they have us on a billboard in Wild County. Sign in and get three thousand dollar sign in bonus.
And that's, I mean, uh, I think, was it Hopkins County they were looking at, that had the bonus situation on, on bus drivers?
We're gonna put out there, we are a hundred and fourteen year olds, like some of them.
Just like the McDonald's sign.
And go out and work for us.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
No problem.
And, and. We're gonna get one, okay?
What's that?
Thank you.
Oh, no.
I don't.
I'm sorry, I, I've got flashbacks there, wasn't it?
You know what? I've dealt with it before.
Overall, I, I, I'm gonna tell you, kinda just give you a feel for it, we're, we're stressed, because mainly it's we're short folks here and there, and everybody's doing extra, and, you know, I went, I talked to a group of lunchroom folks today, and they're like, we need people. And, you know, custodians, we need people, and so we're, it's hard, and we posted, and we get very few applicants, even for like elementary teachers. In the past, I had forty, now you made it two. And, uh, one thing is, we go, everybody's added staff, every county, but that's a bunch of them added staff, but it's, uh, you know, I, overall, though, I think, you know, you're hearing kids like, you're seeing good things going on, and you're seeing more and more kids in school, so. There's a lot of things going in the right direction, and I credit you guys for that, uh, for, for kinda having some faith in us, even though I know it's, it's pretty, pretty nerve wracking, I think we're gonna do what we're trying to do. It's gone pretty well, we've got a lot of sporting events, most of them are happening, we had very few cancellations, like we did earlier, or like we did some last year, so. You know, we are moving in the right direction, things feel like they're moving in the right direction, I think test to stay is gonna help again, I think it's a safe way to help. Uh, research is showing that, but, uh, you know, we're not there yet, and we, we know that, but. Overall, I think our folks are appreciative when they think back to last year, this time. And we've already had a bunch more days in school than we did before Christmas.
You know, that was even when you came through, when you did this, you know, you had a man, and you made it to, I got you, I think, I get them, so.
And so far, we, you know, we've, we've been blessed, and I'm gonna tell you, we've got a lot of great folks, and I just can't say it enough, no one is doing just their job.
They're above them.
Everybody is, and, and, but now, having said that, they're stressed. And, and we need to keep that in mind, what we can do for folks down the road, or whatever, 'cause, you know, you gotta be smart with your money. You know, we have a lot of money now from Esther, but it's going away, so you gotta be careful what you commit to, but we just need to appreciate right now, including you guys, y'all lost a lot of sleep, uh, we text and talk a lot, and, uh, we're not always exactly on the same page, but we respect each other, respect where everybody's coming from, and we all want what's best. And I thank our folks to know that, but I just want you to know that, no matter where you go, we talk to a bus driver, or Kim Dukes, or Joe, it's, it's just, uh, this is tough, this is tough, like it just worked. But we are, I feel like, a little light's coming in, I feel like we're ready to start here.
Some teams are so many, they have, but they have many of the folks up in the best one, and, 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 yeah, any kind of education, but, yeah.
And that's tough, when you're seeing some, some jobs out there saying, this is eighteen dollars an hour, well, we're making some changes, but we can't get to eighteen. No district can, so how do you compete, and then, you know, you hear other jobs, same thing, ten, good paying jobs, ten, ten openings, and maybe one or two applicants. So, it's not just us, but, but I think the subpay is a start with a promise that we're gonna take a hard look at everything in the spring. So we wanted to bring that up today, give you a little time to think about it.
Yeah, I wanna ask a question here. So, let's just say we have a job opening for a second grade teacher, and we only get two or three applicants. Sometimes hiring a person to fill a position, just because they're the best of someone we wouldn't normally hire, is the worst decision we can make. Are we, are we being very careful with those hires, and even passing those three people by, if they're not the person that we need for this district? Because they can cause a lot more harm than good in that short period.
And you know the answer to that, Kim, it's just like with Rajiv, or at the hospital, I think, it's, it's, it's yes and no. It's mainly yes, we'll pass them over, we're certainly not gonna take anything that's gonna put us in danger or liability wise, or just way out there. Sometimes, are you gonna take a candidate that wouldn't be as strong in, in a better pool? Yeah, and, you know, we probably are.
That's what I'm saying, so looking at dead bodies better than nobody.
Yeah, and we're not there, and we're, we haven't been there yet.
Then we're gonna, anybody in that, you know?
But I've had those very conversations with, with principals when I was in the principal ranks. Hey, if, if, if it doesn't fit, you might go to a sub situation if you didn't have the candidate.
We've done some leads, we've bought some time.
And are they, are the hires, I, I can't remember what the policy is here, but if you hire in Middleburg County now, are you on probation for a year?
Yeah, four.
Four years.
When you hire your fifth year, is when you got tenure.
Okay, that's, that's right.
So, you know, even if you had one to fill the year, you could come in and go, I said, listen, you know, Washington's so far, it's, it's upon us, be strong enough to say it's not working. And I think we're there, yeah, I definitely, definitely think we do that.
And they don't know that, they don't want your dollars.
I'm gonna keep you out of that.
I'll be glad to.
Yeah, I think we're willing to do that, that's a good question, and that's real, that's real for all businesses, man, we're not careless, that's for sure. It's just a little, and I know that, but it's a great question, and we've had those conversations. But it's not, we don't have the pool we did in any single job. And we, right now, we're most exposed with the bus garage, and it's not COVID very much, it is surgeries and other things that still happen. You know, and you don't have a whole bunch of extra folks, so, um, if I could just go category to category and brag on folks, I'd tell you stories, and I won't do that, we've been here a minute. But, uh, I'm just. I'm just proud of the folks. It's a hard, it's a hard, hard thing, what we're doing, but at the end of the day, if, if the eye of the hurricane is the classroom, and all this stuff outside.
I'll tell you what, people are happy to see a headache wiping tables at high schools, lunch, lunch tables, oh yeah, they love it. They, they say, geez, wiping my table, one table, I think. They showed up in oil, what do you do?
You know about, and we've been in school.
And big restaurants, uh, you probably read on, uh, that the racing game, the president sent all the office, shut it down for three weeks, and every one of them to the stores, go help the stores, they showed up in oil, you know, shut up, corporate office. And they've been doing it for three weeks, flying and hovering and taking orders and everything, and they have to do what they gotta do.
But that kinda wraps up what I have, unless you guys have any questions, be glad to follow up on it, I, I know you, I want your questions from you, Chairman.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna take it to call for an experiment. I think I'm gonna have to turn, push the members to Joe, or, second, I think I'm gonna have to, I'll pay one turn.